I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, October 19, 2015. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Reverend Deborah A. Walters of the King Chapel AME Church at 2600 Danforth Street. We're glad to have you if you'll come forward and give our invocation, also lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let us pray. Father God, we come at this appointed hour and at this time asking your blessings and your guiding over this council. We pray for every governing body that leads this community and we pray for the commerce and we pray for the community, Lord God. Guide by your strong hand that we will lead strong, that we will lead faithfully. This we pray in your son's name, Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and liberty, justice for all.
And for those folks that don't know where the King's Chapel AME, it's a very small church. I've been there a couple times. And right, if you're looking for a church to go to, a new church, they've been there a long time, I'm sure they'd be glad to have you. How many?
Seventy-five.
By the time I was born. Item two, we have agenda changes. We've got a couple. If you'll look at the current agenda, item 4A and 4B will be tabled again to the 16th of November. And also, when we get down to the consent agenda, item C will be taken out of that, of the consent agenda, and we will note then that we'll change that to a special call meeting on the, I guess, the 26th of October to address that item. So those are the only changes that we have. We've got a proclamation, a recognition of Cobb County Diaper Day, October 26, 2015. Are there folks here for that? Diaper Day? Tell me, is somebody here for Diaper Day? Barbara Hickey. Diaper Day. Listen, I caught so much grief because we were the only city that did not actually do a proclamation for Diaper Day. We just mailed it in and now nobody here from Diaper Day. Let me pick somebody out to get this proclamation. No, Terry Nolowich just walked in the door. Do you want to get it? I sort of make light of it, but I'm going to tell you the Diaper Day thing is really a big, is really a big thing. And I think once Ms. Bluestein reads it, it might make sense to you. But Ms. Bluestein.
Actually, this was something that I was not aware of and I'm kind of astounded. But anyway, we have a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna for Cobb County Diaper Day. Whereas the Cobb County Diaper Day Committee, composed of concerned volunteers, was established in 2009. And whereas low-income families face the reality that food stamps do not include hygiene products such as diapers, on average, the cost to buy diapers is approximately $100 per month. Daycare centers require parents to provide their own diapers. Local agencies such as Mus Ministries, the Center for Family Resources, the YWCA of Northwest Georgia, Reconnecting Families, Sweetwater Mission, and the United Military Care can only dispense diapers to their clients four to six times a year due to the lack of resources. And whereas low-income families often have to choose between food and diapers, causing stress in the home. And whereas economic conditions require creative measures, the Cobb Diaper Day Committee is committed to asking the business community, concerned citizens, and nonprofit organizations to collect diapers from employees, members, and friends throughout the month of October. And whereas the single act of donating diapers can help hundreds of families in Cobb County, the Cobb Diaper Day Committee requests that the donors bring their diapers on October 26, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. to Glover Park on the Marietta Square. And we'll remind you of that. And whereas, therefore, I A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim October 26, 2015, as Cobb County Diaper Day, and ask all citizens of Smyrna and the surrounding area to join in and donate diapers. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this 19th day of October in the year of our Lord A. Max Bacon.
Jennifer, you want to tell us about that? Oh, you're just going to get the proclamation?
She's going to get a picture?
Oh.
I think y'all should donate to this Diaper Day. Thank you. On behalf of the committee, a lot of hard-working people, we're going to take this and share it on social media so that everyone knows what to do and where to do it and when to do it. It's a worthy cause. Thank you.
Actually, Annette Lee, Tim Lee's wife, worked very hard to get that proclamation on the agenda, so. Okay. We have another proclamation in recognition of Campbell High School Day, October 23, 2015. And that is Mr. Nolowich, and I see Dr. Walker and some other folks there. Y'all can just mosey on up this way. Y'all don't be afraid.
Come on up.
Ms. Nolowich.
Yes, I am very happy tonight to issue this proclamation by the mayor in the city of Smyrna that declares Campbell High School Day. And so I will read this and then we will present it to you. And it's beautifully framed. It looks wonderful. So whereas Campbell High School's vision is to seize the present and soar into the future, and its mission is preparing students to contribute and succeed in a global society. And whereas Campbell High School represents the community of Smyrna by, in April 2015, being named one of among the most challenging high schools in the United States by The Washington Post; in February 2015, receiving AP Honors Distinction for the 2013-2014 school year in AP Humanities Honors, AP STEM, and AP Access and Support, AP meaning Advanced Placement; in 2012 and 2013, being ranked in the top 10% of more than 21,000 United States and top 14% of 422 Georgia high schools, per U.S. News &amp; World Reports; celebrating First Sergeant Catherine Burns, a teacher in the school's nationally-recognized Army Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, the JROTC, for being named the Cobb County Teacher of the Year for 2014 and 2015; for offering CTAE, Career Technical and Agricultural Education Programs, such as Culinary Arts, Graphic Arts, and Broadcasting, hosting its own television station; by collaborating closely with Chattahoochee Technical College, allowing students to enroll and work concurrently on a high school diploma and a college degree; by sending students each year to the Georgia Governors' Honors Program, the American Legion Boys' State, and American Legion Auxiliary Girls' State Government Leadership Program; by hosting the Cobb County School District Magnet International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, outperforming other programs in Georgia, the United States, and globally; by celebrating all of its athletic teams and over 50 diverse academic, artistic, and socially responsible clubs and activities, many of which are award-winning as groups, teams, or individually. Now therefore, I A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Smyrna and Georgia, do hereby applaud the commitment and spirit of the Smyrna community and the administration, faculty, students, and parents of Campbell High School, and proudly proclaim the 23rd day of October 2015 as Campbell High School Day. I encourage all citizens to support this school, its administration and faculty, the students, and the parents and volunteers who are seizing the present in pursuit of a bright future. Thank you very much.
Dr. Walker, anything you'd like to say while we bring that down?
Well, just on behalf of the staff, the students, and the families of Campbell High School, I want to thank you for recognizing our school. It's a new day at Campbell High School. We have some really great things going on. We invite you to come in and tour the school. We have tours regularly, both during the day and some evening tours. But it's been a great year so far. Lots of positive changes are happening, and we are committed to making sure that Campbell High School has the reputation as the very best school in Smyrna, Georgia, and the very best high school in Cobb County. So I encourage you, the 23rd is an appropriate day to be called Campbell High School Day. We'll be starting off at 7:00 in the morning with a pep rally hosted by V103 DJ and Campbell alum Ryan Cameron. We will go through the day with another pep rally and assemblies hosted, presented by Kevin Scott with the ADDO organization, challenging our students to really embrace the concept of This Is Smyrna and give back to their community in every way they can. We'll continue with a parade at 5:30, right down the street here, and a football game at 7:30. So it's going to be a great day. Come out to the game or any part of it, the parade, we'd love to see you there. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Now, let's see why y'all are making pretty faces. The 23rd, that's this Friday, right? Oh, here's my schedule. On air live with Ryan Cameron, Cameron at Campbell High School, 8:00. Because that can't be right. I'd have to get up before. We have to be up like at 7:00 or something, maybe.
Do that one more time. Oh, come on, Max.
No, I'm not doing it. It's just not like me. I would tell you this, 50 years ago was my senior year in Campbell High School. This is no lie. I'm not lying. 50 years ago, I was going to say there's two guys out there that would remember that, but they were older than me, Haywood Savage and David Brown. I don't know if, there's not a whole lot of us guys that went to Campbell High School that are still around. Yeah, anyway, thank y'all so much. We are so proud of Campbell High School and the things that y'all do. I had the opportunity, I guess it was last week, to speak to the National Honor Society, which I got a, actually, I got a certificate. Now I'm a member of the National Honor Society. At least, that's the way I'm taking it. A hundred, there was 104, 126? 126 new inductees that went in last Thursday night, I think. There's already like 100 and, just like 200 and something, 200 and how many altogether? Well, there was 38 when I was in high school and there was, of course, I wasn't in the, I was in the C Club because if you played football, you go in the C Club. I don't think David and Haywood was in either, but we had 38 people in the National Honor Society. Eight guys and 30 girls. I don't know how those guys got in there. The girls were always smarter, but that was a, that's been quite a change in 50 years. So we're very proud of our school. Thank y'all very much. Under the mayor's report, I'm going to ask that our city administrator, Mike Jones, just say, don't you do it before and at the end of the meeting because we've got an election coming up two weeks from tomorrow, and there's some polling changes in where you vote at. It's very important because we don't, we don't want people not to know where to go vote. So Mike, you want to just quickly give something on that? We're going to do that at the end.
Yes, sir, I will. And we'll see if we can't get the camera zoomed in on this map change. If you, if citizens will go to smyrnacity.com, you'll see a map of the new ward boundaries. The most predominant changes are in wards 3, 4, and 6, and there are some changes in Ward 2.
Seven's the.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah. The largest change is actually in Ward 7, which is becoming a substantial part of Ward 4. So those that are north of the east-west connector that were formerly in Ward 7 are now in and made part of Ward 4. There will be other changes that occur in the vicinity of Concord Road and South Cobb Drive, which are now in Ward 3. And areas at the confluence of Concord and Atlanta Road are now a part of Ward 6. This is depicted in maps on, at smyrnacity.com. There are several resources there. If you go to that website, you can click on the map. You can see where you live and the appropriate place where you'll go to vote. There are resources for the Secretary of State's office where you can enter your address and get information. We will have 17 signs that will be going out into the community over the next couple of days that will, that will do its best to direct folks where to go on Election Day. And if we can get a close-up, this is what the map looks like, it gives you an idea of what you'll find when you go to smyrnacity.com. There are about 3,000 of our residents that are affected by these changes, and we want to make sure that folks that want the opportunity to vote, that take the time to go vote, actually have the opportunity to vote and they don't get discouraged. And Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to address any questions you have about these changes.
I don't have any, just, did you name the polling places?
Yes, sir. One note, or I will, one note is that there were previously eight places to vote in the city of Smyrna. There are seven now, and those seven polling locations are a function of the wards. And the, and the seven places to go vote will be in Ward 1, Argyle Elementary; in Ward 2, Smyrna Fire Station Number 3; in Ward 3, the Smyrna Community Center; in Ward 4, what most folks know as Brown Elementary School. Your voter registration card will say Brown Elementary School slash King Springs K1. That's not King Springs Elementary School. That is the former Brown Elementary School. In Ward 5, Belmont Hills Elementary School; in Ward 6, Campbell Middle School; and in Ward 7, Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God. And the 8th precinct, which is no longer a voting location, was Griffin Middle School. We'll have signage out in the community to help direct folks where they need to be on November 3rd.
Okay. All right, we'll go on into land issues, zoning and annexation. Item A and B, both are being tabled till November 16th. I'll ask Ms. Terry Nolowich if she will take care of both those two items.
Yes, these are going to be tabled at the request of the applicant until November 16th. I think they're still figuring out some specifics with regards to drainage and how they're going to manage the water on here with A and with B. I think they're still working on a plan, trying to reach some compromise with the community there. So first, I would like to table item 4A. This is item 2015-166. It's the public hearing for zoning request, Z15-008, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes, 1.27 acre tract, landlot 488 through 1091. It's 1107 and 1121 Bank Street. The applicant is Pritchard Brothers Incorporated. The applicant has requested to table this rezoning to November 16, 2015.
Second. Motion, second to table this till November 16, 2015. All those who favor the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item B.
Yes, now I'd like to go and move to table item 4B. This is item 2015-261. This is a public hearing for zoning request, Z15-016, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five new single-family residences, residences at a density of 3.81 units per acre. This is a 2.36 acre tract, landlot 593. The addresses are 1505, 1515, 1525, 1529, 1533, and 1537 Spring Street. The applicant is Pradera Group LLC, and the applicant has requested to table this item to November 16, 2015.
Motion, second to table this November 16. All those who favor the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item 4C, under land issues, zoning and annexation, is C 2015, that's 307. Zoning request, Z15-018, approval of a special land use permit for the installation of a utility hut for Google Fiber Services. I'm going to, there's three of these, and I will get Mr. Jones and his background to explain these, and then we won't have to do it all but one time, so.
Thank you, Mayor. And if Ken will head toward the podium. Ken, our community development director will be providing you more information on these three public hearings. These are for what is termed as a hut location that will support the implementation of the Google Fiber project. And Ken can give you specific information about the three huts and their locations on Park Road, Powder Springs Street, and North Cooper Lake Road.
And while he's thinking about that, these are three different public hearings, and when Ken gets through them, we will ask if there's any public comment. But Ken, you want to go ahead and?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We've talked about Google for 18 to 24 months. A lot of staff time working with Google staff, providing information that they needed, is really now starting to publicly take shape. These three huts are needed as part to build part of their backbone, and I'm sure they could explain that better, but they, it's a necessary step. So with an approval tonight, that will allow them to move forward to that next step, to work towards providing Google Fiber to the city. There are three requests here. They were approved by Planning Commission with 60 votes, and I'm going, I'm going to take these just the way we have them on the screen, simply because they're a little bit different. They're the same, but some of them have six conditions, some have seven, and one has eight. So I will tell you what those differences are as I go through this. The request on Powder Springs is a 2618, Powder Springs, and it is located behind the community center and the police department. For those of you that travel that area, you would probably consider this the overflow lot for community center events. Here's just another location map with an aerial showing with a red dot. Basically, it's not right at the road. It is a little bit into the actual parking lot. It'd be on the western edge of that parking lot where the grass starts, but they will indeed take up a couple parking spaces with that. And during the actual construction of this pad area and bringing in the modular unit for the hut, there, that portion of the parking lot will be fenced off. Here are the three locations of the huts. We have the one at Powder Springs, the one at Park Road there off of Spring Street that's next to the fire station there, which is in front of Johnquill Park. And then we have one actually in the park on North Cooper Lake Road. This is the proposed site plan for the Powder Springs. As you can see, it is located towards the, sort of the center of that edge of the parking lot. There is a dash line to indicate the leased, the lease area as well as the construction area on that. And there is another item on your agenda tonight that deals specifically with that lease. These are what the proposed utility huts actually look like. They are trucked in. There is a pad that is poured, poured that they sit on and are attached to. They are dropped in by a crane. And this is just an example of how one of them would look. Again, the subject property, basically where the van is located there is pretty much where those, that hut will be. And additional properties of the area. Our community development, as well as the planning commission, recommended approval of this requested special land use permit with the following conditions. One is that the utility hut shall be installed in substantial compliance with the development plans that they had submitted at the beginning of this request on August 14. Two is they will be bound by the elevations that are shown, which are similar to the photos I just showed you. Three, the proposed chain link fencing shall be black-coated, black-coated vinyl fencing. I will stop here. In one of the photos, you did see barbed wire. The original request, when it came in, did ask for a standard barbed wire, three strands on that, but with discussions with Google, they have decided that it would be better not to have the barbed wire there so that the fencing, which is an eight-foot fence, not only will be the black-coated vinyl fencing, it will be taking another foot and then slanted in another 45 degrees to discourage people entering that. The applicant will comply with our tree ordinance. All the landscape plans obviously have to be prepared and stamped by a Georgia Registered Landscape Architect for the areas that need that. We have added, and Google has approved, that they're willing to do this, that a little more specificity, that all landscape plans shall at a minimum meet the following requirements. We go into an attempt of what that landscaping is to address, which is screening, as well as control or direct vehicular pedestrian movement, reduce glare, buffer noise, establish privacy, as well as promote health and safety. The plantings are to be a mix of rows of evergreen trees and shrubs, or deciduous trees, and taller evergreen trees, or a combination of both. We will handle that through our plan review process. The species are to be ecologically compatible to the site and appropriate for the design situation, and that the minimum height of the plant material at installation shall be five feet for the trees. And final approval of the landscape plan must be obtained by the community director or his designee. Because of that change I had mentioned regarding the barbed wire, as well as this additional landscaping, I would ask that, and I'm going to give you this verbally, but that whoever makes the motion, that you add another condition, and in this one, on Powder Springs, it would be condition number seven, but I will ask that you put this on all three, is that a new development plan reflecting those conditions, the above conditions, shall be submitted and will become the approved plan at that point. We have done that in the past. I apologize for not picking that up earlier to have that in writing for you. But that is the recommendation on Powder Springs.
Let me bring up the other sites. I know that we've got some representatives from Google here. And before I ask if there's any public comments, Scott, do we need to have them be, do they need to be sworn in?
Got it, I got it.
I'm going to go ahead at this point in time, say, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here that's in opposition too, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this, we want to get you to be sworn in all at the same time. So all this is, is we're approving three huts and for Google to get closer to being a reality. So anybody that wants to speak or thinks they want to speak gets sworn in right now. Okay, get these guys to come up. Okay. Ken, you want?
Yeah, the rest of this presentation will be shorter. The next site is on Park Road, which is next to the fire station on Spring Road. Obviously, the same conditions will roll forward, but I did say that each one had some special issues that we needed to deal with. On this one, the dot shows you where it is. It actually is on an old road bed that is behind the fire station there, but it is on city property. Again, the map, just to remind you of the location of the other two sites. But in more detail, here's the proposed site plan. The red outlines where they want to put this. And again, same, it is a concrete structure. It will have a, sort of a brown pebble finish on it. They'll be, it'll be reinforced on that. This one has basically the same requirements that deal with the development plan, again, of August 14th, as well as the elevations, the chain link fencing, the tree ordinance, and it having to be stamped by a registered architect. But we've also added in, again, the landscape requirements, which are identical to what I read to you previously, but there's two additional conditions here. In this particular one, number seven is the applicant shall remove all asphalt on the abandoned road and city property from the proposed utility facility to the pedestrian bridge. So that'll give you some idea. It is, if you know where the pedestrian bridge is and the fire department, it's actually between those two points. The area where the asphalt is removed should be sited and landscaped as appropriate, obviously using the landscaping language we put above. The applicant shall also relocate the existing dumpsters on Park Circle. Again, Park Circle is that old road bed, to another suitable location, and the city public works shall review and approve all locations. Condition nine, in this particular one, again, is a new development plan reflecting the above conditions shall be submitted and will become the approved plan on that. And then finally, we'll take you over to North Cooper. So you can see, it is just inside the North Cooper Lake Park. It's off of that entry road. It's behind all of that new residential development that we had proved last year. It is, if you go into this section of the park, it's really on the right side of the road. On the left side would be the community garden for reference purposes. Again, we're talking about a 12-by, approximately 12 by 28 utility hut. Again, this gives you an aerial view of where the hut is to be located, but it is inside the park. Again, the hut locations, and here is a little more detail of that. And I will say, just to make sure that everybody understands, approval of the three requests also includes a setback waiver from those residential property lines. Given the ideal location for the placement, we ran up, especially on this one, up against the residential property lines. This particular one happens to be vacant right there, but there are variances built in to that for that side yard setback issue. Again, photos of the huts, and what the subject property looks like. Indeed, it is our park. And again, we have the same conditions that we've had in the other ones, dealing with the development plans, the elevations, the chain link fencing, the tree ordinance, and the landscape architecture issue. The wording for the detail on the landscape plans are the same, and this one only has one more condition, and that is, the applicant shall provide a concrete driveway apron and access road off the North Cooper Lake Road to service the proposed utility hut. And Google is in agreement with that. And again, I would ask that you make condition eight on this. A new development plan reflecting the above conditions shall be submitted and will become the approved plan. That's all the three requests. Again, it went from staff to Planning Commission. Planning Commission unanimously approved it. Staff has recommended approval with these conditions, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions about this request.
I think we're anxious to hear from the Google people.
I will leave on the screen.
No, go forward.
I will leave the three hut locations up on the screen.
Okay. The representative from Google that was sworn in, if y'all come forward, y'all come together.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Scott Simcox. I'm with Google Fiber. I'm the outside plant construction manager for Google Fiber here in Atlanta, and appreciate your consideration of these three parcels. They really are the cornerstone of the buildout of our fiber optic network that will ultimately serve Smyrna. Connects our backbone routes that provide the connectivity and the content, and will enable us to go ahead and build the distribution fiber and access fiber out from these huts into the communities we wish to serve in Smyrna. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Anybody have any questions? And I know people are so anxious about when's Google coming. As everybody knows, we were one of nine cities selected in the metro area to get the Google Fiber. I know everybody's excited about it. Well, y'all may even speak after, if there's any other questions. I swore him in, yeah.
He looks right by them.
Okay, well, let's get through with... Does anyone got any questions?
Mr. Simcox, just one question. You heard Ken Sudworth detail a list of conditions and stipulations for each of the three sites. Just for the record, are you agreeable to each of those conditions as presented?
Yes, sir. We've worked with staff and agreed upon those conditions for each of the sites.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Guys, have a seat. And there was another young man that was sworn in, if you want to come forward.
Thank you. I really just have some questions. I'm Ray Vito. I live at 1191 Powder Springs Street. And just for the record, I'm 100% excited about this project and glad to see it moving forward, and glad to have these gentlemen here representing Google. But I do have questions, which they may have been addressed in the presentation, but if they were, I missed them. And they're just three basic questions about, is a wiring going in and out of these huts? Is it buried? Or is it going to be visible from the street? What about the noise level? I noticed a couple of air conditioners there. I'm sure there probably servers in these huts. What about the noise level from those air conditioners? And they had no idea about the height of the structures. I know they're 12 by 28, but no idea what the height was. And I won't ask the question about timing, but if the Google people want to tell us about that, I'm glad to hear the answer. But those three questions, I'd like to have some idea what they are.
Okay, we'll get the ass to come back up. I bet they got answers for us.
We do. In regards to the infrastructure serving the huts, yes, that will all be underground. Both the power infrastructure that will serve it, the natural gas that will serve the backup generator, as well as the fiber optics running in and out of the hut, will all be underground. In regards to the height of the structure itself, it's approximately nine feet tall. And I believe the last question was in regards to sound. And in regards to the sound, the backup generator has a decibel level of about 75 decibels when operating. The air conditioning units are about 80 decibels when operating. And just for comparison's sake, the sound of traffic, highway traffic, is about 85, so they're both lower than that. And a lawnmower would be at about 105 decibels, just for comparison's sake. The only time the generator would run would be in the case of loss of power or during monthly maintenance testing.
What are the monthly maintenance tests? That actually is a, that brings up a good question, because there is a utility that's located in a neighborhood here in Ward Three, and they got in a habit of running their monthly generator maintenance tests in the middle of the night, which was a little bit disruptive to the immediate community.
We can certainly schedule those and be considerate of the surroundings. Most of them would occur during the day, not at night. We know that there's some areas that are sensitive to the community, and we certainly do not want to disrupt anyone.
Thank you. And how often do the air conditioners run? Is it just...
It's basically an HVAC unit, so they're running somewhat steadily just because of the heat generated inside. So they're, you know, not all of them are running simultaneously, but we need to keep the equipment safe inside, so it's pretty steady.
Okay, and I imagine they'll be positioned in the building in a way that's further away from residences and probably closer to the police station?
They're positioned on either end of the hut structure itself, yes.
Thank you.
Scott, while you're there, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I know the public is widely anticipating your service, and we're glad you're here to this stage, and we know this is an important milestone for the company in installing the infrastructure necessary to spider out the network. So to the viewing public who may be curious, can you give them some relative ballpark timeline on how you like to proceed and what they might expect?
So we'd like to proceed as quickly as we possibly can, and we're doing so. The first step in this is establishing the huts, again, so we can then complete the engineering of the fiber optic network that will both serve the huts, and then to begin the engineering and design of the fiber optic network that will spider web out from those huts into the communities. So our goal is to have these huts' locations secured, hopefully this evening, execute the appropriate agreements with the city, and then start construction in early first quarter for the hut sites themselves. And then we'll just go as quickly as we can after that.
And I know you've secured a global, well-known contractor to manage that install, so you anticipate a rather swift, because you have a large agreement with them to do all of the system.
Correct. So Bechtel is our contractor, nationally known contractor. They've been working on both the engineering and working closely with staff here to get us to this point, and they will also be responsible for the construction of the locations themselves.
Great. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I'm sorry. I thought Wade's name was up there first, but I did want you to address what I had asked upstairs in the meeting about the fringes of the city and reaching those neighborhoods with the, because I do have some concerned citizens that have been asking me that. Thank you.
So our goal is to serve as much of the city of Smyrna as we possibly can. Everybody who wants service, we want to be able to deliver service. Some of the areas that you represent may be difficult to get to over city of Smyrna right away, but we do have agreements with Cobb County to allowing us to access there right away, so that if we need to, we can build through across county roads, or certainly GDOT maintained right away to get to any area within the city of Smyrna desiring to have service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? These huts are critical for Google to come here, is that correct? If you didn't have, you got to have these huts.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, the first one is, it's in Ms. Pritchett's Ward, isn't it? That would be the utility hut for Google Fiber, 1600 square feet landlot, 776, 80... There you see, it's closed. 809 and 2825 Park Road, Google Fiber LLC. That's in Ms. Pritchett's district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item C 2015 dash, I don't have my glasses, so I'm going to have to really be careful with the numbers, 302, 307, public hearing, zoning request, Z15 dash...
018.
018. Thank you, Andrea. Approve, approval of a special land use permit for the installation of a utility hut for Google Fiber Services. 1,600 square feet, landlot 776 and 809, 2825 Park Road, Google Fiber, Fiber, Georgia LLC be approved.
Second.
And that's with the eight stipulations?
Subject to all the stipulations.
Yeah.
Including all the stipulations that Mr....
Eight stipulations.
...said earlier.
Okay. We've got a motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item D, the same request for 26, well, it's landlot 428, 525, 21, 522, 2618 Powder Springs Street. That's Ms. Tara Nulwich.
Yes, at this time, I move to approve item 4D, 2015-308. This was the public hearing for zoning requests, Z15-017. Approval of a special land use permit for the installation of a utility hut for Google Fiber Services. It's 1,600 square feet, landlots 428, 525, 21, and 522. It's 2618 Powder Springs Street. The applicant is Google Fiber of Georgia LLC.
Second.
Motion second to approve...
I'm sorry, and that is with the stipulations as detailed by Mr. Sudworth.
Motion second to approve this one, which is at 2618 Powder Springs Street. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's done. That's pretty quick, 7-0. Item E, 2015-309. This is for landlots 386, 37, 4201, North Cooper Lake Road, Google Fiber. Mr. Ron Finell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve 2015-309. A public hearing concluded on zoning requests, Z15-019. Approval of special land use permit for the installation of a utility hut for Google Fiber Services, 1,600 square foot feet and landlots 386 and 387, addresses 4201 North Cooper Lake Road for Google Fiber, Georgia LLC, with the stipulations as provided by
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's 7-0. Ken, did you mention the stipulations?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we're just getting, that's one step closer to getting Google here, so I hope that's, that's good. We've approved all, oh, we got agreement down here at the bottom, too. I know y'all aren't leaving yet. Item five, its previous licenses, age 2015, dash 291. A public hearing, previous license request, 2015 dash 291. Is there somebody here from Starbucks before I read this whole thing? Okay, good, they're coming.
Did you bring samples?
Beer and wine pouring, 2680 Kyle Parkway. Coffee House Holdings, Inc., doing business at Starbucks, number 8371, with Joseph George Del Sevio...
Savio.
...as agent. This item was tabled from October 5th to October 19th at the request of the applicant, Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this application was, has been before you a couple of times for a couple of different reasons, has been forwarded to this particular agenda. Mr. Savio is the registered agent who will be responsible for the sale of alcohol at the reference location, Starbucks. And the background done on Mr. Savio through the Smyrna Police Department has failed to bring any issues forward that would preclude the issuance of the license if it be the wish of the board.
You are Mr. Savio, right?
Yep.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this privilege license request for beer and wine at the Starbucks on Kyle Parkway? As the records show, there is none. Are you a sworn in?
I'll swear, Adam, if you want.
Let me guess, this is the attorney. She doesn't have to be sworn in, right?
It is.
I don't, I've never understood that. Missing it, no, don't take that, that's silly, everybody. Ms. Pritchett, it's in Ms. Pritchett's Ward.
Good evening. Mr. Savio, would you introduce the lady? I know she said she's your lawyer, but what's her name?
Stephanie.
Capazito.
Yeah.
Thank you. Glad to have you here. I'm the Ward One Councilwoman, and as Mr. Jones said, there's nothing that precludes you from receiving a license. Do you hold a license? Have you held a license before, or do you currently hold a license?
Yes.
Okay, and where?
City of Atlanta.
In the city of Atlanta, okay. And will you tell me, just for information purposes, who else in Cobb County, what other location has gotten a permit to serve wine and beer?
I don't think any as of yet, but we are looking at the store off Marietta Square.
Okay.
At that location right there.
What about in Atlanta?
We have a store that's, we have seven stores that are currently selling beer and wine from Johns Creek to Ponce, to West Paces Ferry Store, in addition to Roswell Market. So there's about seven or eight locations, beer and wine, and some dinner items as well, some additional food items.
Okay. I was also reading that you, some of your places are having like a dinner, but it's not a full meal, it's just some snacks or something in the evening. Are you going to be doing that at this location?
Yeah, so it'll be, there'll be some items that you can't...
There'll be some items you can't get at a regular Starbucks, like flatbreads and bacon-wrapped dates, and fruit and cheese plates, and some desserts.
Okay, that sounds great. So are you planning on expanding that store or opening another one in Smyrna anytime soon?
No, the program fits the current location of where we're at.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone, I know Mr. Finell is going to ask you a couple of questions, or make a couple of statements.
Thank you for being here. It's my responsibility as Chair of Public Safety just to remind you of the responsibility relative to the privilege of serving alcohol. And I know you've gone through that program, the training, and...
And I know you've gone through that program, the training, and I'm assured by your presence here and your acknowledgement and your signing that you're gonna make sure all of your appropriate staff is appropriately trained as well. We do have periodic compliance checks without warning, as you know, and those are designed to make sure that there is compliance on the privilege of serving alcohol. We have a very strong program here with our police department to make sure that our streets are safe, so we do, you know, high rate of DUI work as a police force, and we are assured that responsible vendors like you will continue to contribute to the narrative of responsibility when serving alcohol. Do you agree that you've understood all of those aspects?
Absolutely.
Okay. My second question, are these good for the alcohol when it comes into the store? Been carrying those around for a while. We're grateful that you're expanding your service here. I know that'll help with your sales, but it also speaks to the narrative of what our customer base is telling you that they are desiring and demanding. So thank you for investing in the city of Smyrna.
Thanks for having us.
I do have one question. Would you explain to us about your -- a little bit about your training program for your servers?
Sure. We'll comply with any local work permit ordinance that is needed. In addition, we have full-on training with every partner through our organization in Seattle, so every partner will be alcohol-serve, safe, trained.
Because you do understand that when they do stings from time to time, and we never know when that's gonna be, or anybody except the police, if someone serves, wanted to an underage person, that server will be taken to jail right then?
Yes, we understand.
I'm sorry?
We understand, yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure you understood, because that's a little bit different, I think, than some of the cities, but we found that rather than the owner, if they've been correctly trained, then it's not fair for the owner if somebody doesn't do what they're supposed to do. So that's part of the reason. Plus, then the owner will have to come before us and explain to us why that person wasn't trained properly. Just don't think you're gonna have a problem with that, but we'd just like to say it and get it on the record.
Yep. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one more question. Mr. Savio, the -- do you have a drive-through at this location? You do?
Yes.
That raises a question that I hadn't pondered before. You might speak to the fact that, you know, again, we have a DUI task force, and I want to be sure we do have an open container law in Georgia. It's very clear. So if you'd like to speak to how you intend to handle the service, given the drive-through aspect.
Sure. We have two stores already that are drive-throughs, one in Conyers and one in Johns Creek, and it's obviously, we don't do that. And so the program's mainly for someone to sit in a cafe and relax and enjoy either a coffee or beer and wine. And, you know, to be transparent, the program isn't about being a bar. It's more about bringing folks in that maybe want coffee and someone else wants wine. So the part of the training will cover that as well.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Savio, just to follow up on that, because I would have concerns about drive-through, alcohol-pouring license sales. Are you willing to agree to a stipulation that there will be no drive-through sales of alcohol?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. With that, I'm ready to make a motion. This is 5A, privileged license, 2015-291, public hearing, privileged license request, 2015-291, beer and wine pouring, 2680 Cobb Parkway, Coffee House Holdings, Inc., DBA Starbucks, number 8371, with Joseph Del De Savio as agent. This item was tabled on October 5th to tonight, October 19th, at the request of the applicant. And also include in this motion that Mr. Savio did note that they would not serve alcohol in the drive-through. And that is my motion.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Item number six is a formal business. A is AGR 2015 dash 03, approval of network hut license agreements for the city of Smyrna, the purpose of which is to allow Google Fiber, Georgia LLC, access to city-owned properties in order to construct structures, AKA huts, that will house network equipment and fiber for hut site 108 located on the north side of Powder Springs Street, hut site number 114 located within the North Cooper Lake Road Park, and hut site 129 located adjacent to the Smyrna -- to the fire station, number three, off Spring Road on Park Road, and allow the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, this network agreement summarizes, well, it outlines the specifics that Mr. Sudruth brought forth on the three subject hut sites. It has been approved or has been reviewed by council and is ready for your consideration.
This is under Finance Administration, Ms. Terry Nolich.
Yes, thank you. This is related to what we discussed earlier, and this is the approval of the network license agreement for all three of these locations, which I will now detail. So at this time, I do move to approve item 6A, which is the agreement, 2015-03, approval of network hut license agreement for the city of Smyrna, the purpose of which is to allow Google Fiber, Georgia LLC, access to city-owned properties in order to construct structures, also known as huts, that will house network equipment and fiber for hut site 108 located on the north side of Powder Springs Street, hut site 114 located within the North Cooper Lake Park, and hut site 129 located adjacent to fire station number three off Spring Road on Park Road, and allow the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Second.
A motion second to approve this license, this agreement, network hut license. Any other discussion? Okay. Got a motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0, that's approved. Thank y'all very much. We look forward to working with Google. And I want to thank our staff who worked so hard on it, Jennifer Bennett, Ken Sudruth, Eric Randall. Who else worked on it hard? Chris Addicks? You wanna throw anybody else? Kristi?
Eric Taylor.
Yeah. Well, he did work hard on it. We're looking forward to y'all, and you'll be able to hook up by this weekend, is that correct?
Yeah.
We're like closer than we were before the meeting started. Thank y'all very much. And I'll tell you what these guys say that makes me feel good is that that's -- Smyrna has been good to work with, and not us as much as it is our staff. We figured if we stayed out of it, it'd go pretty smooth, so thank y'all very much. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Item six is formal business. A is, oop, oop, 6B, 2015 dash 349, approval of the transfer of development property lots, parcels 31, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 49, 50, in the Concord Road corridor of the city of Smyrna to the Smyrna Downtown Development Authority. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Bear with me, Mayor. There's a little bit here. In May of 2014, the mayor and council authorized a study that would take a look at the development concepts for remnant right-of-way parcels associated with the widening of Concord Road. This encompassed about seven and a half acres. There were proposals sent out through the city's RFQ process, and after interviewing three firms, the mayor and council decided to partner with Marksville Development and Sizmore Group, and they were awarded a contract to conduct a study for the use of those remnant parcels. After several concepts brought forth, which included linear parks, parcel development and full development of this remnant land, the preferences of the stakeholders and with feedback from the public, it was determined that the most desirable concept would be an incorporation of limited development with the majority of the corridor being preserved as a passive-use linear park. And you've all seen the concept for that project. In January of this year, during a committee of the whole meeting, the final report and the findings were presented to each of you, and the consultant was given instructions to define what that parcel development and park concept might look like. And at the August 17, 2015 meeting, proposed parcel development concept was unanimously approved. As a result of that, the remnant parcels of the right-of-way parcels 31, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 49 and 50, which are now being -- are considered for transfer to the Smyrna Downtown Development Authority for the sole purpose of carrying out the plan that you adopted back in August. This is the, I'd say it would be the easternmost portion of the remnant parcels for purpose of development by the Downtown Development Authority with the balance of that staying passive-use park. I know that was a lot of information just to transfer those parcels, but there's some history there. If you have specific questions about that, I'd be happy to entertain them.
This is Mr. Corky Welch's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to emphasize to the citizens, this is the very eastern portion of this property along the north side out there. The remaining portion of it, we have agreed conceptually to put into parkland as a linear park. It's the piece of property that's, I'm going to estimate roughly 150 feet to the west of Hollis Street, and everything back to the east of there is what we're turning over at this point. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion to -- make a motion to approve the transfer of development parcels 31, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 49, 50, in the Concord Road corridor from the city of Smyrna to the Smyrna Downtown Development Authority.
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have anything that showed anything on the screen while we were talking as to where the property was?
We have it on our agenda. I know, I don't know if it can be put up on the screen or not.
Okay. Got a motion second, transfer these parcels to the Downtown Development Authority. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item seven is commercial building permits. We don't have any. Item eight, the consent agenda, as we -- I'm gonna get you to read the consent agenda, but we will take out item C. Mr. Jones, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On your consent agenda tonight, you have approval of the mayor and council meeting minutes from your October 5, 2015 minutes meeting, and then you have a reapproval from your October 17, 2015 minutes that were previously approved on September 8. This is to make sure the complete minutes were presented and approved, and as a cleaning house, we'd like you to reapprove those. And as you mentioned, agenda, item C under the consent agenda has to do with employee benefits, and it's my understanding that this will be moved off of this agenda and then heard again at a public -- at a special call meeting to be held on October 26th, that you'll have some discussion at that council, the whole meeting, follow that with the special call meeting to take action on this particular issue, given some information that I believe is very important for the council to consider. Item D is approval of the city's wellness program, renewal with corporate health partners, and authorize the mayor to execute the related documents associated with such. Item E, this is a $55,410 expenditure for parks and recreation. This is to refit the plastering of Tolleson Pool so it can be open in the spring. And lastly, item F is to authorize a permit for Atkins Park Restaurant and Bar for a beer trailer during the Fall Johnquill Festival this coming Saturday and Sunday, on Saturday from 10 till 6, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., and on Sunday from noon till 5 p.m.
Here, motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I move consent agenda approval of items A, B, D, E, and F.
All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Scott, anything else? We need any additional action we need to take on that?
Well, yeah, you guys had talked about waiving your formal notice requirement for that meeting. Our charter has kind of an archaic system where you all have to have hand-delivered notice, and so if you're already scheduling the meeting now by unanimous consent, you could waive that.
Okay. So with this action, then we're -- then we are gonna have a special call meeting on 26.
Yeah, I would just, you know, ask somebody to, I mean, if you're interested in waiving that, if somebody to make the motion to waive the formal notice requirement for those meeting, for that meeting. That has nothing to do with the public advertisement for it, but it's just a notice to you all so you don't have to have a police officer hand-deliver a notice to your home. It just kind of takes the workload off of the staff here.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we take up item C on October 26 and request formal relinquishment of the formal notification requirement as per the city charter, advertising this as a public meeting, and the commencement time is in conclusion of the Monday night committee of the whole meeting on October 26.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Yeah, we don't have it on -- can we vote? We can do that.
Mm-hmm.
That's approved 6 to 1. White Linaca poses. Okay. Committee reports, we'll start tonight with Mr. Ron Newcomb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm Ron Finell, I'm sorry.
Close enough.
Well, he answered to it.
I'll answer to anything, generally. Hey you, I get a lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public safety community is bracing for the next phase of weather. As you know, as the chill in the air and autumn comes around, the holidays start coming around, so we're trying to help prepare. The time change is coming soon. Halloween is coming soon, so I urge all drivers to maintain the highest degree of sensitivity to pedestrian traffic that will increase as kids will be out in the streets during that holiday. I may not be at the next council meeting, so I will make sure that we get that on the record. I want to applaud also the volunteers from the Starbucks family that went over to South Carolina to help with the flooding, which is why they voluntarily delayed the opportunity to come before this council. And I want to applaud all those volunteers out there who provide assistance and who did recently provide assistance, even some of our Smyrna Public Safety personnel. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. White Linaca.
I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to remind everybody about the festival this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, the Fall Johnquill Festival. And also, I want to just mention what I did on Saturday morning. I participated in the Adopt a Mile with members of the, about 15 to 20 members of the La Luz del Mundo Church, and we -- they cleaned up, or we all cleaned up, two miles on South Cobb Drive from Powder Springs Street up to Pat Mel Road. And I just wanted to give them recognition, this group has been cleaning that section of South Cobb Drive for two years now, and they do not have their name on a sign yet because it -- there's some complications because it's a state highway, but we hope to get that resolved, but I just wanted to let everybody know what a great job they're doing out there. And thank you very much.
Mr. Charles Welsh.
Enjoy yourself, and hopefully we'll have a good crowd and good weather.
I yield. Ms. Terry Nolich.
Hi there. Yes, it looks like we are gonna have beautiful weather for the Johnquill Festival. Remember, the kids have their Halloween costume parade there. You can join that. The police department has that, and registration begins for that at 9 a.m. on Saturday morning. And I wanted to also point out, there's a map on the city website, but the voting wards have changed. Everyone should have received their precinct cards this past week. There are 70 new streets that are a part of Ward Three. Some of them came from Ward Five, some of them came from Ward Seven, but nearly all of them came from Ward Four. And so you can find that, you know, if you're not sure where you are now, because I've had people call me and say, gosh, I've been in Ward Four for 35 years, and you've moved. So you haven't moved, but the wards have moved. So to mitigate any confusion, I encourage everyone out there to pop onto the city website, smyrna.gov, or smyrna.gov, and go ahead and find out where exactly it is that you are, because you might not be where you think you are. And I also wanted to just point out that, again, it's gonna be a great weekend, chill is here. If you've turned your heater on, make sure you have a carbon monoxide detector, especially if it's the first time you're running it for the season. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Yeah, talking about the wards moving, if you are on Spring Road right now, right around Rev Coffee, you may be no longer in Ward Three, you're in Ward Two, which means that you will vote at the fire station on Spring Road's Fire Station Number Three. So that particular area, you want, do want to pay attention to that. I look forward to working with you in that area. Now, with that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ward One is the only ward in the city that did not have any changes because we had the sufficient amount of citizens that we already represented. And in case you missed it earlier, we're meeting, we're going to vote at Argyle Elementary, which is exactly where we voted for every how many years we've had a school there, and I just want everyone to be aware of that. There is no changes in Ward One. I would like to ask everyone's prayers for Sandy Sands. Sandy's worked in the city, and she was really big for the Taylor Bronner House and done a lot of things. Sandy went out to visit with her son, was in California and had some, an illness. She's been in the hospital out there, and her prayers, all of your prayers are greatly needed for her. She is improving, but we don't know yet when she will get to come back home. So just keep her in your prayers. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor.
Sandy Sands and Bluestein from Brooklyn, they're here every meeting, they sit right back there, and they do pay attention, so. Mike Jones, anything else?
I have nothing to add, Mayor.
Scott Cochran.
Governor.
City Clerk, Ms. Terri Fram, I think you've got some.
I just wanted to remind everybody, as some of the council members, as well as Mike Jones, has let people know about the voting. It is election time, and early voting is going on right now, in person, at Cobb County Elections located at 736 Whitlock Avenue, Marietta, until October the 30th, from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. Advance voting will be held in our community center at 200 Village Green Circle, October the 26th through October the 30th, from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. There will be no advance voting on Monday, November the 2nd. You also have the option to absentee vote without reason. Call Cobb Elections to have an absentee ballot sent to your address, and they will mail, and then mail it back. Current polling locations for city voting, November the 3rd, 2015, are as follows. Ward One, Smyrna, 1A, Argyle Elementary School, 2420 Spring Road. Ward Two, Smyrna, 2A, Smyrna Fire Station Number Three, 2825 Park Road. Ward Three, Smyrna, 3A, Smyrna Community Center, 200, I mean, that's 200 Village Green Circle. Ward Four, Smyrna, 4A, Brown Elementary slash Spring, King Springs K-1, 3265 Brown Road. Ward Five, Smyrna, 5A, Belmont Hills Elementary School, 605 Glendale Place. Ward Six, Smyrna, 6A, Campbell Middle School, 3295 South Atlanta Road. Ward Seven, Smyrna, 7A, Life Church, Smyrna Assembly of God, 4100 King Springs Road. Voting in the 2015 Smyrna, City of Smyrna elections, ward designations may have changed for many. Precinct cards were mailed by Cobb County, and residents began receiving them in the mail last week. If you have access to the internet by way of computer or smartphone, you can log on to our website at www.smyrnacity.com, and on the front page, under upcoming events, is polling locations, new wards, and voting options for upcoming elections. Here, you will be able to access maps, and also, under GIS, type in your address to find your current ward. The Secretary of State website at www.mvp.sos.ga.gov will take you to my voter page. Here, you can enter your first initial, last name, county, and date of birth, and find where your voting precinct is located. The city's webpage, as well as Cobb County Elections webpage, www.cobbelections.org, also have a link to the Secretary of State's website. For any questions, you may call the city clerk's office at 678-631-5303 for help. Please remember to vote. Thank you.
We do not have a show cause hearing. We have several folks signed up from citizens' input. The first one is Gary Nelson, 872 Chrysler Avenue, parking violations.
Mayor and Council, my name's Gary Nelson, and I live at 872 Chrysler Avenue in Ward Five. There is a vacant lot in my neighborhood at the northeast corner of Wells Drive and Mel Court. It is located across from 2130 Wells Drive. There are no curbs or gutters on this side of the vacant lot. The residents across the street from the vacant lot use the shoulder of the road for parking. They have rutted out the shoulder of the road and turned it into a mud pit. There is drainage under the road at this point, where the mud and silt washes into the watershed. I have complained about this at least a dozen times over the past five years. I have complained about it to the city marshal, I have complained about it to the police department, and I have complained about it to my city councilwoman, but nothing is ever done about it. It is an eyesore in our neighborhood. Maybe the reason that nothing has ever been done about it is because one of the prime offenders is a City of Smyrna employee. So the lesson here is that if you work for the city, you do not have to abide by the same rules as the other citizens. The city's failure to enforce its own codes and laws has a direct effect on the quality of life in our neighborhoods and our property values. I'm just wondering, is it incompetence? Is it corruptness? Or is it you just don't care? Thank you very much.
Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail Comments.
My first comment tonight is this article in yesterday's Marietta Journal. It is such a pleasant reading to see professional, balanced, unbiased reporting. That, to me, is what I call true journalism. To have a questionnaire sent out to everybody to answer questions is absolutely a pleasure. Unfortunately, I can't say that about The Bright Side. In previous elections, until today, when I ran, not once, anytime, did the local paper, The Bright Side, ever say, or call, or contact me on the issues when I was running. And to me, I find this to be blatant jerk, biased journalism. It's just incredible that you never get a call, no comments on running, which is, again, a local paper, it's an important event, and to see this, again, I can't applaud The Marietta Journal more. And speaking of this article, Mayor, there is, I hope people have realized, reading this, that you and I, on two of these issues in here, are way off. The first one being Johnquill Plaza. You're now on record approving these apartments in Johnquill Plaza, and how a grocery store is gonna enhance apartments, I truly don't understand. That should have been, again, all commercial. That way, we would have had some shopping downtown for clothes or something else for people to go to. Again, all we have is a big lot and a dollar stores, and there could have been some shopping in there. You only have twelve acres, so I am totally on the other side opposing these apartments, which has sadly been passed. And secondly, at least we agreed, no new increase in taxes. I, if I'm elected, am gonna look for a way to reduce taxes, and I'm taking it a step further on that. But I wanted to comment on these two articles, and again, I cannot believe the people on this council still believe we need more apartments in Smyrna. That's the last thing we need. Thank you.
Alan Dunn, 3726 North Cooper Lake Road, is the candidate.
Appreciate the opportunity to come up here before you, and I will be brief. All I want to do is just announce that I am running in Ward Four for city council, and I consider it a great honor to be running against Corky, and I appreciate all the support I've gotten, but I just want to say a few things about, I'm sixty-four years old, I've been, I've lived in Cobb County fifty-two years. I've lived in the City of Smyrna for twenty-eight years at North Cooper Lake Road with my wife, Phyllis, and I must say that, at least twenty-five years of that, I was represented by one of the finest city councilman that ever represented citizen in this city. Pete Wood was a great man, and he had my back, and I have to say, I appreciate what he did for me. I just, I'll move forward. I'm a member of Smyrna First United Methodist Church. I found out this week Corky and my ex are also members. I guess we go to different, different services, but anyway. I, I'm an Air Force veteran. I, I'm disabled because I've had both my knees replaced due to my military service. I'm retired from AT&amp;T, I worked there thirty-one years before retiring, and I've worked as a contract engineer for eight years prior to joining Cox Communications, where I'm an engineer. I handle critical infrastructure, deployment, and anything relating to the electrical, air conditioning, anything to do with the power systems, that's what I work in. I look forward to tomorrow night's debate, I'll be there, and I also would like to say it's been a privilege to work with the citizens the last three to four months on the zoning issues, and I appreciate what you guys did for us. And also, I look forward to representing the citizens of Smyrna and also working with them, and my number one desire is to listen to them and try to do what they want, number one. And with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Wade Lenika, 3950 Glenhurst Drive Election.
I am Wade Lenika, I am running for mayor in the city election on November 3rd, and ask for your support. By way of introduction, I've been married to my wife, Robin, for thirty years, lived in Smyrna most of my life. I have a bachelor's degree in management from Georgia Tech and a master's in business from the University of Michigan. I served in the United States Army for three years, and then nineteen more years in the Army Reserve. I retired at the rank of major, I'm a Vietnam Air Infantry Officer, I'm airborne qualified and ranger qualified. I have over thirty years of business experience, most of it in supply chain and purchasing. My last corporate job was as vice president of purchasing for CPG Pepsi Bottlers, a co-op that worked for one hundred and twenty independent Pepsi-Cola bottlers here in Atlanta. I'm now co-owner of a small consulting business, Buy Well with a Partner. I've been involved in the community on various nonprofit boards and groups for many, many years. Last several years, I've been a volunteer coach at Campbell High School, and I've served twenty-eight years on the city council. Why am I running? I want to talk about three things tonight. One, leadership. I think we need strong leadership to lead the city into the future. We need to restore civility and teamwork among the council, we need to have weekend retreats to talk about the strategic direction of the city, something we haven't done in four years. We need to stop the wasteful spending that this council has engaged in, and we need to end the good old boy method of governing, that has got to go. Second subject, the Braves. If I'm elected, I will begin meetings in January with our entire city council and the Braves organization. We need to be talking with them on a regular basis, the city council and the Braves, to talk about managing the impacts on the city, especially traffic, and I hear a lot of concern about DUIs after events, but also to talk about how we're gonna get them involved in our community. Can we get them to partner with our schools? Which leads into my third point, education. Improving academic performance and excellence in the Smyrna area schools is the absolute focal point of my campaign, and the number one issue that I hear about from citizens as I go door to door across the city. I think I've knocked on over two thousand doors, and that is absolutely the top issue. I want Smyrna schools to be the destination schools for Cobb County. I want it to be the school system where all the parents in East Cobb and West Cobb and North Cobb want their children to go to school. I'm gonna work with the principals, I want to improve the schools. Improving the schools will bring higher property tax values and help everyone in the city. A great city deserves great schools, and I will help to bring that. Smyrna is at a crossroads of both challenges and opportunity. The city needs strong leadership, the city deserves better, I will provide strong leadership. I ask for your vote on November 3rd. I'm Wade Lenika, I'm running for mayor. Thank you.
Ron Fennel, what was that, 703 Vanings of State's Drive Announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and to the viewing public. I'm here to do two things. Number one, it was cited earlier about the MDJ questionnaire, and as a candidate without opposition, both Ms. Bluestein and I did not get the privilege of making our comments public as the rest of you did, and that was the choice of the editor. He was kind enough to return my call and tell me that he made that decision. In future, he may make a different decision, but he made that decision, so I wanted to give both of us cover as to why we weren't in that publication. But I'm here today wearing my private sector, not-for-profit hat today. I am the current president and slated to be president in 2016 as well of the Smyrna Business Association. We are hosting what we do every four years, a public forum. It's not a debate, it's a public forum for the community to see the candidates running for city council and mayor. The board of directors got together, we have fashioned a dozen questions, we submitted those questions to each candidate running for office, and in the words of one of our board members, we just didn't need to hide the ball. We want you to know what's on the mind of the business community, let you respond with what you know, and give a sense of what your understanding and relationship between the city and the business community really is. Some details, since I am also a candidate, although unopposed, and a fellow board member, Derek Norton, is running for office, neither of us will be a part of the program except as candidates on tomorrow. Joseph Malbro, our immediate past president, will preside over the proceedings. He will do the welcome and introduction, followed by Mr. Alan Lipsit, assisted by Kathy, the editors and publishers of The Bright Side. Alan's a former president of our organization, he is our current webmaster, but they will take these questions that have been provided and accept questions on the floor as well, depending upon the timeframe of the evening and which candidate's responses result in allowing us. Our goal is to go ninety minutes, two hours at the most, much like the CNN negotiation that was just recently underway in the Republican primary. We don't want to bore people to death, but we want to give adequate time to give flavor and a sense of what all the candidates for city council and the mayor want to impart. So that is the format. We have a very straightforward evening, we think it's gonna be an opportunity. I invite all citizens, it's free of charge, it's at the Smyrna Community Center, starts at 7 p.m., will be done by 9 p.m. Any candidate is welcome to bring their literature, bring supporters also in advance. If you could supply the Smyrna Business Association with your photo and a brief bio, we're gonna have a rolling slideshow that'll allow that part of the program to be fully rounded. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Charles Welsh, 870 Austin Drive Election. Charles Welch, 870 Austin Drive, election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'll be very brief. I know everyone up here, but for the people out in the audience tonight, I am Charles Welch, commonly known as Corky. I'm married to my wife Catherine, have been for thirty-four years, have two children, 28, 25. They both live in the metro Atlanta area. My daughter just moved downtown, so we're empty nesters again. I've been employed for the past thirty-four years by a consulting engineering firm called Stevenson &amp; Palmer Engineering. Our primary business is municipal consulting. We work with cities and counties throughout the state to provide infrastructure, street, storm drainage, water, sewer. So I can say, when I have questionnaires, that people ask, how much political experience do I have? I have four years on this council, and thirty-four years as a consultant to multiple cities and counties around the state. I've seen thousands of different problems in those thirty-four years, some very simple to solve, some very complex, and I feel like that gives me a very good insight into the problems that we here in Smyrna have. Most of my clients are smaller, but the problems are still the same. They have budget problems, they have infrastructure problems, they have problems with personnel, and I've been involved in each and every type of problem that they have. I think I add an insight to this council, that I try to listen to the issues and listen more than I speak, and that's my goal as a councilman in this council, is to listen to everybody else's opinion, try to bring everybody together, and hopefully arrive at a consensus that's the best thing for the citizens of the City of Smyrna. In closing, I just encourage everybody to get out on November 3rd and vote. I am Ward Four. Everybody in Ward Four, we've said this about ten times tonight, but everyone in Ward Four will vote at the old Brown Elementary, which is now the King Springs Annex. So get out on November 3rd, vote Charles Corky Welch, Ward Four City Councilman. Thank you.
Susan Wilkinson, 2805 Stone Creek Road, election.
Hi, I'm Susan Wilkinson, and I live at 2805 Stone Creek Road. I've lived there for twenty-nine years, and I've been married to my husband, Doward, for twenty-four years, and we've raised our two daughters here in Smyrna. And I just want to say a couple of things. When, as my experience as an independent contractor and a small business owner, and working with a variety of companies and small businesses, and meeting their needs and deadlines within their budget, gives me the experience that I think I need to be on the city council to continue representing the citizens. I think of the citizens as my customers, and I believe I'm a good listener, and I represent them the best I can. And I also want to thank the citizens of Westfield Trace for inviting me to their neighborhood block party this past weekend, or yesterday. I really enjoy meeting the people and visiting with them, and also listening to their concerns, and it was great to see the improvements that have happened there in their neighborhood, as well as several other Ward Five neighborhoods that I've been working with, and they seem to be very happy with things that are going on, and they've formed the Neighborhood Watch program there, and they were telling me yesterday that they have seen an improvement in their crime that was happening there since they've started their Neighborhood Watch. They said they haven't had any crimes since they started, so that was good news. And I want to also remind everybody that all of Ward Five votes at Belmont Hills Elementary School, and Ward Five didn't change very much. Everybody that's been in Ward Five is still in Ward Five, except for a small community of homes, Surrey Park condominiums, right off of Church Road, are, is the only area that was in Ward Five before, that now will be in Ward Three, and they will be voting at the community center. So I just wanted to remind them of that, and also, I ask for your vote on November 3rd, and thank you very much.
That concludes everyone who signed up. I'll just say this, I'm often glad to see that we approved the Google Hut license agreement tonight, and the three locations for the utility huts. Getting a step closer to Google coming to town. If there's no other business, I'll tell you this media adjourned at 9:07.